Shut out from the laptop to the TV.
Yeah, so then.
Yeah, it's nice, but I would have had set the camera a little bit higher, I guess. I'm sitting right beside the stove, there is eighty-eight degrees and climbing here or so.
Starting to strip down.
Can you mute Karma so we can go a little bit faster than than the end?
Meeting is being recorded.
No.
We're not on Facebook yet, but we are recording.
Yeah, maybe you should mute me again there, Sarah.
Just can't help yourself, eh?
Take the control out of my hands there, you'll be with it. Do I have a minute to get a bottle of water?
I just got a text that said Donald McPhee passed away.
Like a, what's that, ten days after she died?
Not long.
He was between Christmas and New Year's, because I wrote to Alison last night and I said, oh, man. I can't find Mary Beth on Facebook, you gotta tell her how sorry I am, because as an only child, must be devastating to lose both your parents that quickly. And he, he didn't feel good, and then boom, he was gone, like. Not a, not a warning at all. That's a loss.
Okay.
Sorry about that, folks.
Okay, we're live, okay, so we will continue our meeting, we've just come out of, out of closed session. So we will continue the meeting, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? And we do have one, Council Madden. Michael Madden declares a pecuniary interest with item six C three by law zero five twenty twenty-two. On the twenty-fourth of January twenty twenty-two, he is the owner of a service providing entity. So Council Madden will just shut his camera off when we get to that, that point. So I have a motion moved by Council Massey, second by Council Noble. That the minutes of the following meetings be adopted as circulated, regular meeting of council, January tenth, twenty twenty-two. Special meeting of council budget, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and special meeting of council budget, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. And we will move on to staff reports, administrative department strategic plan update. Is there a motion for that? Yes, there is, eh? Sarah, is that, I'm just looking at that the committee, the whole receives report A D twenty twenty-two zero one. For information purposes only, this is not the committee of the whole, so. Is there, do you have a motion for this?
Um, that would probably be a motion, Jamie, you just need to change it to council.
A motion moved by Council Noble, second by Council Madden, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives report. A D twenty twenty-one zero one for information purposes only. Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to provide council with just a brief update on the strategic plan. As you're all aware, this is the election year, so there's only about nine more months of your term. I was very pleased to report as I went through this, that we, you know, despite. Covid nineteen, we are, we have moved forward and quite a few of the initiatives on here. Many are on hold for different reasons. But we, you know, staff has been working diligently and will be working to complete. Some of the items towards the end of the year, so for instance, you will be getting a report next month on the rare. Tim and I were discussing it just last week following the budget, so we're looking at bringing our report in February on that. I also know that the county is. Programming and we're pleased to report that on Monday we'll be reopening the dome and the arena. So, you know, certainly I think we had some great plans and I know the program coordinator was working on some programming that. Sort of got halted because we had to close down because of the pandemic, but we're hopeful that. You know, as we move into the last part of this year, that we should be able to get some of that program running. And, you know, some of the issues on here are things that will continue even outside of the strategic plan, so. The customer service and some of the other things that we're working on, you know, staff will continue to do so. The development charges, feasibility studies on hold for now. The county is doing a growth study and we're communicating with them. The consultant that was hired to do that is also the consultant that's hired to do our D C study, so. Where the information that the county will be getting for the growth study will be used for the D C study. On our side, so we put that on hold for now, it's actually a good news story because some of the preliminary numbers we've seen through growth. Are not very good for North Glengarry, so we're hoping. That, you know, talking to the county and pointing out some of the development that's possible within, you know, Alexandria and Maxwell, as well as some of the rural areas. Through the marketing and development strategy that we can have a good growth strategy for North Glengarry that then can be used for the D C study, so. Certainly, I can take any questions if council has them, but, you know, I'm certainly. Pleased with some of the things that have been accomplished for this council in terms so far.
That's great, thank you, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, agreed, Sarah, I think that there's been a great deal of good work been done in the last. In the last three years, a lot of accomplishments with regards to those just goes to show. What a, a good strategic plan can do, if it's well set up, you can actually make a good progress, so. You know, compliments to staff for all of your hard work on all of those items. I'm just wondering if, I know that there was a working group. That had been established, I imagine it went dormant with regards to the Alexandria Main Street project. We haven't met, the, I was on the working group at one point. It hasn't met in some time, I'm just wondering if, if you could. Maybe talk to Ben Dehan and see if there's some value in re-initiating that working group. So that we can kind of find out what's going on both locally and at the counties and get this moving. That would be great if you could do that, and then just one other thing with regards to the hookups for the water project in Maxwell. I was a little surprised to see that there were still forty-nine and unconnected homes. And I, I'm just wondering. You had, does anyone have any insight on that as to, that's a higher number than I had expected. I know that they're going to be built from now, now on in, and they've had plenty of opportunity to hook up. I'm just wondering if anyone has any insight on that.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, so certainly Karma or Deputy Mayor Williams, we, we met as a group, so myself and the C B O. Fisher Public Works, as well as some Waterworks staff sat down and we went through the list. A lot of the people are sort of just not interested in connecting, unfortunately. Some were having some difficulties getting some plumbers in, but we've been told that's not the case anymore. They each, we do have detailed notes on each, and we will continue to, you know, encourage them to connect. However, we did have to make the decision, as was mentioned, to start billing them. We think that once that starts, that will encourage the connection at that point, because. It doesn't make much sense that you'd be paying for something that you're not receiving. And, you know, it's, it's sort of all over the village, unfortunately, that people haven't connected yet. But we will be keeping an eye on that, it's something I've been, I've been getting updates as we move forward. And I know the C B O did personally deliver letters to everyone in the summer. Of two twenty-one, so everyone's been personally spoken to. And as well, I know the public works specialist does keep, you know, communication open as well, so. We'll be providing another update to council on that in the next couple of months to see where we get, and. You know, we have given extra time for Covid, we gave an extra twelve months, so. You know, we've been very, you know, interested to hear the reasons why, and some of them are just being a bit stubborn, so.
Okay, thank you, any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to the Treasury Department, twenty twenty-two. Operating and capital budgets, I have a motion moved by Council Madden, seconded by Council Manley. That the township, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report T R twenty twenty-two zero three. Regarding the twenty twenty-two operating and capital budgets. And that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts the twenty twenty-two operating and capital budgets. As amended at the January thirteenth and January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two budget meetings. With a net municipal tax levy requirement of six million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. As noted in the attached documents, welcome, Kim.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor. At the two special meetings of council, there was a lot of discussion about various line items. On the report you have before you there, the items noted, I'm not going to read them line by line. However, there was some studies and further discussion required for. Bringing fleet forward in March with reserves and debt limits. Plus updating all the ages of all the equipment, providing a five-year list of administrative costs and, and neighboring communities as well. The rare report council, which the C E O had mentioned previously. Then the Public Works Director to provide a report to council regarding roads requirements in the spring. There was a report as well for a ten-year plan for the water treatment area. As well, in this budget, there was a two percent increase for water and wastewater, which does not affect the tax base at all, as it's a self-supported entity. At the end of the day, council has suggested leaving the proposed one point seven seven percent. Tax rate increase, which reflects in that six point three million dollar tax levy. The attached budget document is, reflects the changes that council requested at those meetings, and. That's about it.
Thank you, Kim, any questions on the budget? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you.
Very much.
Thank you to all the staff and directors for getting this done, and I think we have a good budget. We, we kept the tax rate down as, as much as we could, definitely below the cost of living, so. Good kudos to everybody, thank you, thank you to members of council for all they've done through this, that. Good job, everybody was well prepared, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to planning, building and bylaw enforcement. I have a motion moved by Council Manley, seconded by Council Wensing. That the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts zoning bylaws Z dash fifteen dash twenty twenty-one. And that bylaw number Z fifteen dash twenty twenty-one be read a first, second and third time. And adopted in open council on January twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, welcome Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this zoning by law amendment was presented to the planning committee on December thirteenth. The owner is Monsieur Michel Longton at twenty-one, six eighty-one Glen Robertson Road. Monsieur Longton wants to build a secondary home, like a second house on the same property, so if you remember, that's the. It's a big, big property, separated with the tracks, southern portion is rural, north is ag. And he wants to build another house for himself beside a pond that, that's existing on the property. So we did not receive any comments from any members of, of the public regarding this file, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect, thank you, any questions or comments from members of council, Council Madden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, one quick question, Jacob, in the report, it said this application is for the entire property, the hundred ninety-three point two one. On the schedule A that's attached to the bylaw, it's just the ag portion.
It's the, it's the entire ag portion, but yeah, it, it's, it's a little bit complicated with this one. Because of the tracks, so if the intention of Monsieur Longton was to separate the rural from the ag. It, it would complicate things a lot, but luckily, but maybe we should, should have worded that differently, it's, it's the ag that's being rezoned to A G. One ninety-seven where the house is going to be, so. The rural cannot be detached from the other part, because he would need some right away on that rural lands there, so. It would, it would create a bit like more complicated, so that's why we worded it like that, just to ensure that. The entire property cannot be rezoned or cannot be severed unless we do some other zoning amendments and other planning applications.
Okay, so just to clarify, once we've done this, so he can't sever off one of those rural pieces south of the tracks and leave. There's, there's essentially two pieces there, right, one on each side of the driveway. So he can't. He couldn't sever off, say, the east one and leave the west so that he's got its frontage.
Well, he could, but he would have to go through another zoning bylaw amendment, and at that point, I think the counties would not accept that. Because it would be the second one from, from a property, so I, I, I don't think, for now, the answer is no. But he would have, I guess, yes, if you go through some other planning applications, so.
Okay, good enough, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to. To number two, I have a motion moved by Council Wensing, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams. That the council of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report number B P twenty twenty-two zero three. And that the council of the township of North Glengarry appoints a deputy chief building official for the enforcement of the Ontario. Building Code Act within the municipal jurisdiction of the township of North Glengarry, and that bylaw zero three twenty twenty-two be read a first. Second and third time and adopted in open council on January twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so this, this bylaw, just to, to make sure everybody's clear, we're not hiring another deputy chief building official. It's just a, it's just a clerical bylaw, really, what, what's it for? So as you all know, we've hired Michel, and so I, I don't know, I did not pass this bylaw right away. Just wanted to make sure, I guess, everything worked well, everything is going really well with Michel, he works well with everybody, so this bylaw is just really to. To actually give him the, give him the, the, the powers of being a, a chief building official in case. I have to leave or whatnot, and as you can see in the bylaw, he's also appointed as like a property standards officer. So he's allowed to do orders on his own, he's appointed as a fire provincial officer, so if there's any. dangers to life, and so this is really just paperwork, we always work all together. But this is just to formalize his, his title and role as a deputy chief building official, really, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jacob, I think you might have got this past Deputy Mayor Williams, you know, we could have gotten, you could have got another one, but. Any questions or comments? Okay, geez, was she mad, she just laughed? I'm just kidding, Karma, come back. Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried.
Doesn't look happy.
Are you back, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, Kim, sorry, I keep getting tossed out, sorry about that.
No worries, we just hired seven more people while you. Moving on to six C three, and I'll ask Council Madden to turn off his phone, his. Camera, I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Council Massey. That staff report twenty twenty-two zero two regarding septic inspections be received. And that the council of the township of North Glengarry into, enter into a two-year contract. January twenty twenty-two to December twenty twenty-three with Lakeside Green Environmental Consulting. To provide plan review and inspection services for part eight onsite sewage system of the Ontario Building Code. And that bylaw zero five twenty twenty-two be read a first, second and third time and adopted in open council on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so as you know. North and South Glengarry are the only two townships in S D G and then Prescott Russell. That are not using South Nation River Conservation for septic permits. So this report, I guess, time goes fast, this is a very similar report. That the one that was presented four years ago, when we renewed the contract for Lakeside Green Environmental, so. It's pretty much the same service, so what Lakeside does. Someone comes at the office, they apply for their septic permit, so we take all the information, we email it to him. He does the revision, he does the, the actual permit. I'm the chief building official, so I'm responsible at the end of the day for the septic system, so I sign the permit and the permit is issued to the landowner. The inspections are done after that by Lakeside. I have really zero complaints regarding that service, it's going really well, really smooth process. And I, I know the chief building official down South Glengarry very well, and he says the same thing, so. Nothing against South Nation, I'm sure their service is good too, but at this point, this is, this is working very well for us. Local, a little bit cheaper than South Nation, similar prices to all other townships. So it's really good for both taxpayers and for, for the municipality. So yeah, I guess it's, this, this time is a two-year contract, as you will see in the fees. They were increased a little bit, so there's some insurances that were bumped up a lot from Lakeside, so. This pretty much covers for the insurance, but I just want to note here that. These fees are all being recouped by the, the, the landowner, so when we issue the permit, he pays for the permit. Which pays for all the services, so the township is not, we're not losing money with septic, we're actually making a little bit, not a whole lot, but. It pretty much evens up at the end of the day, and so that's why we're still able to provide that service for. A little bit cheaper than, than what we could, but it's, it's going well, so yeah, I think that's, that covers it pretty much, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Council Manley.
Yes, so, so Jacob, those, those. The fees that are listed in the, the document, the new fees that are listed for, for this coming up year. Are those, are those as well lower than South?
Yeah, yes, they are, yeah, they will, I think the user fee by law will come in in a couple of meetings. We've adjusted our fee for the septic based on these costs, and. I also checked with Salvation and we're, we're a little bit under, we're, so for some things like for. I think for reviews or something, we're very much even, but for the actual septic service, septic system, which is the one we get the more. We're, I think, fifty bucks cheaper or something like that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, there are none opposed. Okay, we will move on to number four. Council Madden, I believe will be coming back. I have a motion moved by Council Massey, seconded by Council Manley. That the council of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report number B P twenty twenty-two zero four. For the formal request that Rogers Communication Inc.'s proposal be considered complete. And that the township of North Glengarry approves the assessment of the process Rogers has undertaken. To date for the construction of two wireless towers in North Glengarry to improve wireless voice and data services within the township. And the township issue a formal letter of concurrence to Rogers with a copy to I S E D. In order to permit Rogers to move forward with the installation of the proposed wireless communication sites, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I guess you're getting used to these reports here, we've got a lot in the last few years. Of course, it's, it's normal now with everybody working from home, especially for the last two years, that. People are looking for good internet service and voice and calls and stuff like that, so these two towers are for Rogers Communications. And as you see attached to the report, I did attach the site selection and justification report, so. This is the evaluation they do, this is all federal, it's the evaluation they do to figure out where the tower should be. And like what property should be used, is it better on, on an existing entrance, is it gonna alter? Watershed, is it gonna alter some neighbors, like for, for visual pollution and whatnot? So they do all this report, they submit it to us, we have a quick look, and then we. Basically read it and we say we have no objection at this point, and we request that they. That they provide us when they're all done with the research with what's called a consultation summary and concurrence letter request, so what that is basically is. So again, it's all federal, so what they do is they just ask for a concuss letter to say that. We're aware that this is happening, we, we cannot issue a permit because it's federal, I try every time, but they know their stuff well, they, they will not. Pay for a building permit in the township, so again, Rogers know how we work, since I've worked there, I think it's the fourth or fifth hour that they put up. These two towers, one of them, the first one ninety-one point five meter high. It's a guided tower, so it's got these, these wires from the top and then coming down. The first one is located on Angel Road in Apple Hill thirty-seven forty-four. So it would cover like the, I guess, southwest of the township, and the other one northeast corner, it's a, pretty, it's on Old Military Road. Pretty much at the corner of Blind Road intersection, so you've got the two towers. The two, two are being built on farmlands, no close neighbors, they did all their research, both of them, they received. Zero comments from, from anyone, they have to advertise in the newspaper and to all local neighbors. Both of them are gonna use existing entrances, the only thing that you'll see going up is the tower and a little mechanical cabinet at the bottom. So, yeah, besides that, I think there's no issue, so what I will do if council. Wants to do the, the letter, they're, they're gonna be able to proceed with the construction, I guess, in the. In the spring, I didn't ask when, but I assume it's gonna be in the spring, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, questions or comments, Council Massey?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Jacob, the long-awaited news for, for everybody, I guess, with, like you say, with the Covid. The reception, just look at Karma here, like, I know here in Fasfer, and also we have basically no reception some days, so. Good news, what I would like, what I would have liked to maybe, what, like, I'm. I'm, I'm sorry that the, the federal didn't come up with a plan that all these companies, that the communication companies not. Invest all in, like, instead of having all their different towers on themselves, they should have ganged up and used. You know, the, just like the Bell Line did, you know, instead of popping up towers here and there, they should have just combined their. Their monies and build a few towers for everybody to use, anyways, just a comment that maybe the. I know it's not our, not ours to say, but in the future, you know, it'd be probably better for. For everybody, they would share the towers instead of having their own, but anyways, good news, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Council Massey, Council Manley.
Yeah, just, just to follow up on, on something before Jacob too, so about a year ago, we had, we had two of these as well from Rogers. One for Greenfield and one for, I think it was Glen Robertson.
Yeah, there was one in Maxwell as well.
Okay, Maxwell, right, yes, do we know where the status of those are? Because it seems to be taking a long time.
Yeah, it is, I, I can, I can send emails to see what's, what's going on, but they don't, like. Once, once we issue the letter, I'm, I'm pretty much out of the picture, so I'm just. I, 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 we send the letter and then they're allowed to do the tower, when it starts, what happens or whatever. I, I have zero clue, I don't get notices, I don't get nothing, so I can send emails to, to get, to, to know what's, what's happening though.
Yeah, maybe if you could, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council Noble.
Just, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a follow-up then, Jacob, for the town of, of the Hamlet, Alahill, that's just been waiting for this. So don't pop the champagne yet, like, if they start in the spring, then it actually only start at the, sometime later on in the year. So in that same letter, could you double check with these two towers too, and just see if there's a, a timeline we could get out of them? No pressure.
No, no, I can, well, like I said, even if I put pressure, they'll just delete my email, but I can definitely, yeah.
Does that actually work? Does that actually work?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, a quick point, councillor Massey, your point. When I was reading through, I believe there was mention in there about companies sharing towers. And they're making the point that these towers are going in spaces where there's no coverage because of the tower surrounding. But they made mention that they're high enough and they're strong enough to support the infrastructure of other businesses, should they wish to, to piggyback on it. I will call it, not to say that the companies will, but apparently there is that ability.
Okay, yeah, because Bell and Tellis share, ones over by Vanclekill, yeah.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Okay, moving on to the Public Works Department. Thank you, Jacob. Crosswalks on county roads. I have a motion moved by councillor Manley, seconded by councillor Madden, that report. PW twenty twenty two zero two, crosswalks on county roads be received for information purposes only. And I'm assuming, Tim, Tim? Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's been some concerns brought up about. Or questions about how we get these crosswalks over county roads. And I did some investigation and provided that you in the report what the, the policy of the, the counties is. So essentially, we have the power to make, sorry, the township has the power to make decisions. On how pedestrians get across county roads. However, the financial burden also lands squarely on the township as well. I've also done some research into what sort of crosswalks we should be using. And consulted with Ben from, from the counties and Michelle and some layer in research. And we've found that we wanna lean away from the type D crossings, which are suggestive crossings. That essentially the onus is on the pedestrian really. To make sure that they're entering when the, when the crossing is safe, such as you would get on very low-speed residential streets. So we wanna recommend the type C crossings, that, that's similar to what we have in downtown Alexandria with a. Rapidly flashing light. There's a few, there's a few variations that you can get, whether the, the sign is over the top of the road. Or just on the side, on the side seems to be fine, but the important bit seems to be that you have the rapidly flashing signal. To make drivers stop so they really pay attention to it, especially for the higher speed. I mean, it's, it, it isn't a huge speed, but there's evidence to show that the type D crossings. Put in the wrong position can actually increase incidence of pedestrian incidents. So essentially, we, we recommend these type C crossings based on the installation at Alexandria. Taking out some of the, the fancier elements like the stamped concrete that isn't necessary. We can just paint lines. We will need tactile strips at each crossing and depressed curbs. We can do it for about fifteen thousand dollars a crossing. That's a, that's a budget, not a hard number, but that's essentially materials. We do it all ourselves. Essentially, we get a hydro vac to, to dig the hole. That's not projected in the twenty twenty two budget. I would suggest that. We actually have those traffic counters now as well, so we could get some more information on what, what traffic. Not only the, the vehi- vehicular traffic, but we can get some information, even if it's anecdotal, on the pedestrian traffic in those areas as well. And make sure that we can plan where the best place is for these crossings. You'll see in the report, there's one for Maxville Manor, which is suggested, and one that's suggested for. The district high school in Alexandria. The one in Maxville is more problematic. Because there's not a suitable sidewalk on both sides of the street. So essentially, that, that was this report, just to bring the information to council that. The, the cost is on the township to put them in and that we recommend if we do put them in, we put in a type C. So that we, it's a, an airtight solution for pedestrians.
Okay, councillor Massey, then deputy mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Tim, for the report. Good news there again, because in the longest time, we're always been told that it was a county issue. Now that they put the, the, but a few months ago, before you came, Tim, I think I requested that, that you look maybe. You know, Glengarry Sports Palace under the, the road going to the high school, coming out. Maybe Jimmy can help me. There's a street there, you know, the McDonald Boulevard and then there was, I think it's Hope Street.
No, you know. I know it's huge time, just a small, little sliver.
Yeah, so it comes out and then the kids are often, when the GSP is open, often go from the high school to the arena. So there was a neighbor a few months ago, requested that we looked at the crossing there too, like. Because there's a lot of people going through on the other side. So just maybe if you can add that, add that one to your list, Tim, please.
Yeah, for sure.
Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Tim, thanks for your reports. Your reports have been very thorough and. It's, it's good. Well done. With regards to the Maxwell Manor. There's a significant redevelopment going to be happening there. I'm sure councillor Manley or Massey knows more about it than I do, but there is the potential for a change in entrances. On that property. And so I think certainly before moving forward. I would consult with the CAO of the Maxwell Manor.
Yep, good point. Go ahead, Tim.
Through you, Miss Ma, yes, Sarah, Sarah and I have arranged to, to meet and take that into consideration.
Excellent. Okay, any further questions or comments? Councillor Madden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. One, that's called Ronald Street. Tim, I'd just like to echo, echo the deputy mayor's comments about your report, the hundred and fifty three somewhat pages of the book fifteen. Of the Ontario Traffic Manual. Making for some wicked good reading. I haven't gotten through all of it yet, but someday maybe.
Are you saying you didn't read your package, councillor Madden?
I read my package. I, I skipped some of the Ontario government stuff.
Very disappointing. You should be reading everything. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to municipal drain maintenance policy. I have a motion moved by councillor Madden, seconded by councillor Winston. That the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts the municipal drain maintenance policy bylaw number twenty twenty two zero four. And that bylaw twenty twenty two zero four be read a first, second, third time and enacted in open council this twenty fourth day of January twenty twenty two. Tim?
Thank you, Miss Ma. So this policy is what I had spoken about in the budget meeting previously. And what it will allow us to do is essentially set a cutoff date for when we get requests to clear drains. And what I'm trying to do is make it so that we can set up all the work for the clearing season. So we don't clear drains in the summer because it, it interferes with the fields and the harvesting. And we, so we really only do it during that late November to March. And what's happening at the moment and what I've seen is that we get these requests very, very last minute. And we, we rush out and we try and, and organize things. And I think it's frustrating both for the team at Public Works. And also for the, the residents who get the bill and the farmers who are having their, their drains cleared. So that, that in a nutshell is what this, this bylaw is about and it shouldn't really change anything. We'll still do emergency clearances. If there is a request, we will still go out and assess the drain. But it's essentially putting a plan in place that if we get a request and, and miss a deadline. Then you kind of have to wait, wait till the next one if it's not an emergency. And that, I think that's gonna work a lot better for everyone. We're gonna send out notices as of that date. These are the people who are going to get their drains cleared. And then these are the people who will be paying for it because it's on their land through the drainage act.
Okay, perfect. That's, that's good news. Nothing like having a good policy, just to avoid issues down the road. Councillor Noble.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, I, I, I appreciate this. I know that everybody around me here is gonna appreciate this. And definitely the team themselves, because what's better than knowing what your plan is a few months in advance, especially when it's this kind of stuff. And that way a farmer can tell you if, you know, everything is off and oh, maybe then you can be the first one or it's one of those years where you can't get the crop off till Christmas. Well, okay, maybe we'll bump you in the third place. And then, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure anybody that's gonna pay the bill is gonna appreciate having a couple of months notice as well too. So thank you very much for all the work you're gonna put into this and, and for everybody in Public Works for this.
Perfect. Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, through you, Miss Ma. I also must point out that Zoe, the public work specialist, she is. She's been the person who's been running this and she came to me with the idea. So full credit to, to Zoe for. For all this and.
That's great. No, that's great. Thank you, Tim. Okay, no further comments? All those in favor of the motion? A motion is carried. Thank you, Tim, for your reports. Notice of motion next regular public meeting of council, February fourteenth, twenty twenty two at seven PM via Zoom. You okay, Jacques? Valentine's Day. You won't be taking anybody out that night. You're good?
That gets him in trouble.
Okay, I have, moving on to confirming bylaw. I have a motion moved by deputy mayor Williams, seconded by councillor Massey. That the council of the township of North Glengarry receive bylaw zero six twenty twenty two. And that council adopt bylaw zero six twenty twenty, twenty two, being a bylaw to adopt, confirm and ratified matters, matters dealt with by resolution. And that bylaw zero six twenty twenty two be read a first, second and third time and enacted in open council this twenty fourth day of January twenty twenty two. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. None opposed. And we are going into adjournment. So I have a motion moved by councillor Massey, seconded by councillor Noble. There being no further business to discuss. The meeting was adjourned at seven fifty PM. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you to all members of council and thank you to staff as well as anybody watching at home. Hopefully you have a good week. This is the last week. We hope that we will be in lockdown and better times are ahead. So let's stay positive out there and smile a little bit. All right, have a great night. Have a great evening. Thank you.